Hello.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
So I think this is our board for the time being. Monica could not come tonight. Vicky is running. She said 20 to 30 minutes late. So and then we have Heather. We don't have a position for Heather. I mean, we don't have. We have one open slot. So I think we've got everybody who is going to be here at least the next 20 minutes, which is to have two parents and two community members. So that's good. So I think, Chelsea, we were going to ask you to get the meeting, run the meeting this evening since we don't have a vice chair. And you're so practiced at it from the finance committee. And what other wonderful things can I say about you? So you won't feel like you've been bombarded on. We're going to elect someone else, but we haven't had a chance to do that yet.
No, that is totally fine. And that's what I was actually just looking at, just to make sure that it was on the agenda. And I'm very excited that it is. So I will, I will happily start the meeting and roll things through until which time we pick someone.
All right, great.
Thank you. So welcome, everyone. And we'll start with a roll call of the council members. One of the things that we do at Finance Committee that works well is I'll just call everybody's names out. So we're not waiting to talk over each other. And so Laura.
Laura Swanson here.
Laurel here. And Tricia.
Here.
And I, Chelsea, am here. Sorry, trying to make notes and do this at the same time. And I will go ahead and read the invocation. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another. Love of our school. Love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. And that takes us to 1.4 Agenda Modifications. Does anybody have any? Hearing none. We'll move to 1.5 Audience to address the council. And just a reminder for audience members that are here. This time is to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Items that are on the agenda will have time to be discussed at that time. Hearing, and I guess I should pull up the. There we go. Seeing none. We will move into item two, the Consent Agenda. Item 2.1 will be the minutes from January 19th and January 27th, both of 2021, as well as the financial reports, the, and the donations. So that's what we have on the Consent Agenda today. I will, if there's no questions, entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I move to to approve the Consent Agenda.
Great, thank you, Laurel. We have Laurel with the first. Do I have a second?
All second. I couldn't unmute myself there. It was like.
I couldn't either.
So I think in an attempt to try and kind of pull some order into these meetings, we're going to try a couple different new things. And Zoom has limited features, so it makes it tricky. So Alex, correct me if I'm wrong. But we should really all be able to just stay off mute. Obviously, if you have loudness in your house, you can mute yourself. But when you go to unmute, Alex, do you get notification if somebody tries to unmute?
I don't see any notification when someone tries to unmute. So we'll either have to use the hand raising function or we can just keep. I don't know if this is possible, but all the board members can stay off mute because I can give you the power now. And then when the audience has a question, they can use the hand raise function. I'll leave that up to you guys, how you want to do that.
If you don't want to be off mute, then, then you can use the hand raise function. Laura, did you have something? Oh, I think Laura needs to be unmuted.
I was just going to say, in my experience with multiple people being off mute, you tend to get quite a bit of feedback. And we could totally try it and see what happens. I'm happy to do that, but just kind of a heads up there.
Yeah, yeah. But we'll give it a try since it's not going to be everybody in the meeting, just the board members. So hopefully that helps. But yes, if obviously if it becomes a problem, we'll have to explore other options. So let me just make sure. So I who made the motion? I went to write it down and then got sidetracked. Okay, Laurel, correct? Okay, so Laurel made the motion. And then Tricia, I think, got her audio first to second. Okay, then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Laura.
Laura.
Almost, Alex, we're getting there.
I know, sorry, that was my bad.
It's okay, Laura Swanson, I.
Laurel.
I.
Tricia. Tricia needs to be off mute.
I.
And Chelsea, I. We'll get through this, guys. We'll figure it out. And and then that takes us to item three, which is actually a closed session item. And so Alex, will you be putting us into a breakout room? Is that how we're going to do this?
Yes, I think that would be the best idea. So give me one second on that.
Brianna, it looks like you have a question. Alex, can you unmute Brianna?
Yes.
Pardon me in my really classy chip eating. Thankfully, the mic is off. Um, any, just a general estimate on time? If we're going to try to like, say, make dinner or something like that? Is there a general estimate on time?
I don't see it being a really long one. I don't know, Chelsea, what do you think? Do you have an idea?
I, I would expect probably at this stage, probably 15 minutes. Okay. Yeah, not, not real long. Thanks. All right. All right. And Vicky, welcome. Alex, if you could make sure that the minutes reflect Vicky arriving and see you all in the breakout room. Do we have everyone back? Let's see. Vicky, Tricia, Laura. Laurel. Oh, there she is. Okay, it looks like we have everyone back in the main room. So the report out from closed session is that no action was taken. So that takes us into item four. 4.1 would be the Vice Chair nomination. Not everybody at once.
So I think that we are, I would like to nominate Chelsea Parker for that position. We decided that that was okay, even though she's finance, right?
So I cannot do both. And
Got it.
That I believe is written in the bylaws. I think that's where that's written. However, that being said, if somebody else is interested in taking on the Finance Committee, we are in a very good place finance committee wise. This would be the time to take it over. If that was something that spoke to any of you. And I mean, obviously, I would still be on the board, so I'm still available. But and any financial stuff is also reviewed by the board. So.
In my opinion, I think that you are really strong in finance. So I would say, keep you at that part. But that's just my opinion, so.
I would, I would hate to lose Chelsea from the Finance Committee.
Yeah. And I'm not opposed to staying on finance either, which then takes us back to the Vice Chair nomination.
All right.
Just saying. And Vicky, I know you did it previously. Are you interested in doing it again?
I would do it again. Sure.
And Laura, I saw you come off mute. Were you interested?
I was going to ask the same question of Vicky.
Yeah. Yeah, I would do it again. That would, that would be fine.
Okay. And I support that nomination.
I, I would be in support of that. So I think Vicky did a great job filling in last time.
Okay, so we have Vicky nominated. Is anybody else interested?
Good.
Hearing no one, then we will conduct a vote for Vicky. Laura.
I.
All right. Well, I guess we have to actually have a formal motion before we vote on it.
I would love to nominate Vicky Wannacott for the Vice Chair position.
Thank you. And I, Chelsea, will second that. Now I will call for the official vote. Laura.
Laura Swanson, I.
Laurel.
I.
Tricia.
I.
Vicky.
I.
And I, Chelsea. Great. So with that, Vicky, congratulations. You are the Vice Chair and now in charge of the meeting. You're on mute, though.
Well, see, that, that wasn't a good start. But all right. So 4.1 is taking care of the Establishment of a Facilities Committee. We did that. Finance Committee, do you, for?
Actually, on 4.2, I would like to make a motion that we actually establish an advisory, an administrative facilities team.
Okay.
If I may.
Is that actually, I, I'm in agreement, I would second it. But isn't that a change to what's written in the agenda?
That.
Committee versus Advisory Group.
Team, yeah. So I, I think you just really don't have to take action on it and just inform the community that you, you are recommending that I establish or requesting that I establish that. You don't then have to move anything on it. You just have to.
Okay.
Announce it.
Then I would. If I were to do a motion on that, I would say, I move to not have an advisory committee, but to establish, what was the other language you used?
You know, Facilities Committee, not a board level Facilities Committee, but in a Admin Advisory Team.
Admin Advisory Team.
Just to keep it real clean.
Yeah.
And I will second Laurel's motion.
If she said emotion.
I did.
You did.
Needed Susan's help.
Do we have any other discussion? Actually, yes, I have a question. Who will choose or invite these members to this team?
So I will request from staff and from parent community representatives for this. I will have at least one of each and hopefully two of each. And then I will also invite Buck Ernest to be on this committee with, or this team with me, with us.
Okay. And then you would give reports to us?
Yes.
Hearing board meetings? Okay. All right. That's just, those were, I just wanted those clarified. Are we ready to vote? All right, then. Tricia.
Tricia, I.
Chelsea. I.
Laurel.
I.
Uh, Laura.
I.
And Vicky Wannacott, I. Did I get everybody? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now, Chelsea, from the Finance Committee Chair.
Yeah. So.
That's me.
Okay. I just wanted to do a quick review of my notes because I've been away from them momentarily. So really, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. We reviewed the financial reports and recommended them to all of us at the Charter Council, which we saw in the Consent Agenda. And everything's actually looking good. Things are still a little bit tight coming into the summer months, but it really is going to depend on just the timing of money with the deferrals. And so we have what we know is going to be deferred. And then we have things that aren't officially deferred, but, you know, but are coming late because that's what we're seeing as a trend this year. So if they don't come too late, we should be good. July looks, you know, June, June, July is where our tough months are. But as long as not too many of our payments are pushed too late, then we should actually be able to be okay without any borrowing. And if we are to have to borrow, it would be pretty minimal. And, and then as soon as those payments catch back up, we would actually be in good shape. And so that's really good. We we did have the salary scales on our agenda, but we tabled those and we'll be discussing them at the next Finance Committee meeting. And that is mainly an administrative salary schedule because we don't yet have one, as well as adjustments to the salary schedule for the minimum wage increases in the out years. So you can expect to see those. We ask that, that they be done for us to review and look at as part of the budget development for next year so that it's, so that we're not revising the budget because we've waited too long to make a decision. So, but that's.
Thank you.
Thank you. That all sounds like good news. Okay.
Moving on to 4.4 Policy Review with Susan.
Okay, we had this issue come up to us through our, through Charter Impact and Legal that there is a requirement as far as a final pay and the way it's done for all employees. And as has been our practice in other things like this, we will, we have a Personnel Policy Section, put it in that and then put it in our, our employee handbook. So that, this is the first read on that. It's basically saying when somebody leaves us, how we are required to pay them, timing and so forth with that. All right. Okay.
And again, Susan, thank you for you and your team's work on this. You know, just the continued work on policies. It was really great to see this.
It's like one nice solid brick after another, Susan.
Yep, that's what it is.
Getting those things done. Good. Good. Um, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so tell me what's next.
Um.
Oh, thank you.
Nice.
All righty. And.
This was our first look at this, correct? So we have one more look before we're.
Yes, this is the additional look and then you could review it. And we would approve it next month if you are so stated. Vicky, can I speak for just a minute about this? So, once upon a time, a long, long time ago, we would have the representative of the parent, that goes to the parent council, report on what goes on in the parent council. And somehow, over the last couple of years, we stopped doing that. So my humblest apologies to that. And I reached out to Trish, Tricia, and she said she would be willing to do that. So it will now be on every agenda. So I turn it back over to you, Vicky.
Great, all right. And Tricia, you're going to, going to give us a report what the parent council has to say every month?
I am, I am, I am. So, and they are a lovely group of people and I really enjoy spending time with them every other. So every other Tuesday is my meeting schedule. And they are super passionate and giving people. So it's, it's really enjoyable. And so this last meeting, kind of what happened was talked about box tops, which we talk about pretty much monthly and how we can do more box tops and advertising it. And people know about it and all of that kind of stuff. And we talked a lot about doing a basket. So Ms. Claire has been trying to do a, put a basket together for the annual giving fundraiser and being able to sell raffle tickets to then raffle that off. So we've been talking about that for a couple of months. And that finally got approved by parent council. They are to fund money to put this basket together to hopefully then be able to raise more money towards the annual giving fund, which will go towards the materials. So, and so that got approved, which was exciting. And then we, they started talking about Mayfair. And obviously, everything looks much differently than it has in the past. But so they've had some people that are interested in trying to formulate an idea and a plan for some kind of Mayfair that would possibly be able to happen. You know, to what degree, we don't know. But, and so those were kind of the big things that we talked about. But yeah, I mean, they're always. If they're just brainstorming ideas, make more money and bring the community together. So that's really what they do every month. And I think throughout the month, they all talk a lot, so.
Okay. Thank you. Item 4.6 Strategic Plan Review in May.
Yes, so I pulled up the strategic plan again. And we, we had initially slotted to discuss this in the fall, but with all the COVID planning and that work, we did not get to this. So my thought and suggestion is that this become part, connected again with the same timing as the LCAP. So we fit it all together nicely and do a formal review of it in May this year before the LCAP is completed in June. That way, we will have collected the LCAP data and questions and can have that broader piece. So I think just planning to do the this in May, I think makes sense for the timeline of the school. And I just wanted to bring it forward again and, and remind us all of what we had committed to working on this year.
Great. Thank you.
It's a lot of pressure on you, Susan, with the, you know, end of the school year and that. So hopefully you'll have plenty of support. I mean, doubling up on those things is, but anyway.
It is, it's a lot, but to get it all done at once, I think, and not spread it out. You know, we'll get it done. And then if we have all the planning done in June, then our August will be more effective, I think.
Okay.
That's my thinking.
All right. Next item on the agenda is, oh, we're talking about terms of length again. Item 4.7, there we go. Review of Council Members' Terms of Lengths.
Yes, so we had established a document on this in, before the election this year, but we hadn't really brought it back. And so I asked Alex to pull up the information from your offers of terms. And we're really working on this being a a set term so that it's, you know, Monica, for example, is here through this year and then her position will be available for three years. So so I wanted to review it with you one more time before we put it into the, on the website. So people were aware of when your, your dates are over. So, yeah, so that's it. It doesn't need approval or anything. I just wanted you to see it and to know what it's about.
All right.
I think this is really great, Susan, because I think, you know, we've established how important it is to have a good staggered board. And I would love to see some similar thought go into the committees as well to have that same. So for a future meeting, because I think that the way the committees are, is kind of a every year, every one turnover. So maybe it can be something to consider for, for a future meeting, future time. But I really like this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Written meeting norms. Item 4.8, I'm not sure what this is about. Is that Chelsea's? Chelsea?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's on, my name's on it, so I'll, I'll speak to it. And we briefly chatted about it at the last meeting and kind of started this process. And one of the things that is not new, and I'm sure you've all noticed, is especially when we have big ticket items, sometimes our meetings end up more as a town hall, bigger discussions and brainstorming events, which is great. But in in kind of keeping with how we should be running our board meetings, maybe being able to streamline this process to ensure both that we hear from the community, but also in a way that allows us to make good, solid decisions and have good discussion amongst the board members as well as the elected body. So some of the things that I had kind of, well, I got all the Chico Unified School Board meetings. So much of my, many of my suggestions have to do with just seeing what works really well there. Obviously, we're a smaller school, so we can, you know, be looser or tighter as, as we wish for what works for us. But, you know, one of the things that I really like about the way their, the way their meetings run for each of the individual items is the item opens and the first thing that's done is kind of, you hear the facts. So from whoever's presenting the item, like, for example, this one, I am presenting this item. And then any other like experts or people to speak on the facts of the item or, or for the information portion. And then after all the information is out there, then it's opened to the community for their input. Also with the three, three minutes, right? Three minutes per speaker. You know, the same thing we outline in our, our program. And then once those speakers are heard, the, the community speakers are heard, then that portion shuts down. And then the board takes both the factual information and the community input. And then they're, we would then be able to have a thoughtful and productive discussion. And of course, there's still opportunity for us at that point if we need clarifying questions or anything can ask those. Which I thought, I, I think is a really neat way to run it and, you know, meet as a neat. or anything can ask those. Um, which I thought, I, I think is a really neat way to run it and, you know, neat as a neat and tidy. So it's something to consider. Um, you know, in, on here, some of the other items is Robert's rule. Um, I, you know, I know that there are other formal meeting norms that have been put together. So that's just one suggestion to use the Robert's rules of order so that, you know, and, and for us then to subsequently get training on what all that entails. Um, so that we can be thoughtful and mindful and also have the opportunity to kind of make a note what if something's getting sidetracked or not going according to the established meeting norms. Um, like for example, at Chico Unified, um, you know, you'll hear often a board member, you know, speak up and say, oh, point of order. And then, um, just note what point of order is not being followed or is being deviated from to keep consistency throughout the meetings. And I, I find that to be respectful and not like, you're not doing it right. But just, you know, a friendly way to remind each other. So something to consider. I'm either utilizing Robert's rules of order or, you know, one of the other well-established, um, publications out there that's made for governing boards, um, such as ours. Um, and then the other, so I'm going, I'm covering eight point one, two, and three. But not necessarily like one edit, you know, and it's kind of all part of the same discussion. Um, so the four point eight point three, the speaker cards, um, I think those are really valuable. Um, because it, it gives the opportunity for people ahead of time to put in their intention to speak on an item on the agenda. So as we come to that item, we have an idea of, um, which speakers we have, how many, and can ensure anybody who was interested in speaking on a topic. Um, ensure that they receive their, their time to do that, um, which also does not limit people from um, in person deciding on the day of, or at the time of the meeting also to, to speak. You know, it doesn't take that ability away, but it does, um, add an ability to sign up ahead of time and add a little bit of order to that. And give us an idea, you know, if we have a lot of people submitting speaker cards on a specific topic, recognizing that maybe it's going to take one, more than one meeting to come to a decision or, you know, things like that. Um, and I think it helps the administration to prepare in, in those kinds of events, um, as that's coming in. Um, and then the in-person meetings, four point eight point two, um, one of the things that I wanted to suggest, um, and, um, just as a suggestion, but something I think that would be really nice is for us to return to in-person meetings, but for the board only. And then, and so, you know, that we can ensure adequate spacing and safety measures, um, and all of that. Um, and then still have, have good discussion. I think having in-person discussion is really good. Um, and then having the, um, community still be able to attend via Zoom. And that would help us to kind of navigate some of these issues that we have on Zoom where either everybody can unmute themselves and jump in whenever they want, or nobody can, or everybody can be in the chat, or nobody can. Um, and kind of some of those limitations that we're seeing on the technology we have available. Um, so that was a thought that I had, um, that I also think would help to establish a little bit more, um, organization within the meetings and a little bit more, um, efficiency in our discussions. So those were just some of the thoughts that I had. I know at the last meeting, I asked for it to be put on the agenda. Um, and so I wanted to speak to those things and, um, and Susan, if you have anything else to add, I know we've talked some. So if there's something that I brought up with you and have forgotten, um, please, and then.
No, um, thank you, Chelsea, for laying it out. And, you know, what became clear to me after last month's meeting and after talking to some of the parents that have brought issues up, um, there really was not an understanding of how to bring an issue to the board. Or up to the school. So I would say, for example, okay, let's, you know, let's talk. And they're like, well, why would I talk to you? I need to talk to the board. And I thought, well, no, really, it's probably a better idea for you to, you know, sit down and, and allow me to see if I can solve the problem before it goes to the board. And there was really a, a lot of confusion about that. So just in talking about that and really, um, talking to Chelsea about her experience at the Chico Unified Board, as well as Brownneck Training that she and Monica attended this year. Just to have some real clarity about, um, how meetings, um, were moved forward effectively. So we, you know, we have a tendency sometimes to have, um, discussions between the board and the, and the public. And that can go back and forth and be really hard to control, especially in this time of, um, distance, um, meetings. So, so Chelsea helped us to outline this. We also took some information from other sources and wanted to present it to you as, um, a thoughtful document, not to say, yeah, this is great, but really to look at it and think about how it might help us, um, to have, uh, healthy, positive meetings, um, in the future.
And one, one of the other things in this virtual time that is being done at the Chico Unified meetings that I really liked, that I think also reduces some of the technology barriers for people. If people submit a speaker card on a specific item, um, they are called, if they're, you know, if they're not present, they are called, um, during that, that item slot so that they can speak to it. And so I think that's also a nice option. If you want, if you feel passionately and want to speak to an item, but maybe you don't have an internet connection that's stable enough to do Zoom, you can submit your intention to speak and then you can be called. And of course, the call is, um, public. So like, it can be heard. Um, and I don't know the logistics of providing that, but I do really like that option too. And I feel like it then further breaks down the barriers for people who do have important things to say. We have an amazing community with a lot of very important input. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're enabling everybody who, who wants to. And, you know, we always talk about making sure we think about who's not in the room. And I think this kind of opens that door a little bit, um, to potentially get, get those people in their room.
Thank you, Chelsea. Thanks for your work on that. Um, any questions, comments? Are we ready to move on?
Um, I have a comment. Uh, I really appreciate you putting it together because it does get confusing sometimes. Um, so, um, it is helpful to have, I think, a clear understanding of how we should be conducting our meetings. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. And item four point nine. What parents can do to get action on a concern in the informal complaint process? Is that you, Susan?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this goes back, you know, we brought up the uniform complaint procedure, um, which is a formal way of complaining about a problem, but oftentimes what we get are really not that level, you know, the, the, um, uniform complaint, you know, if, if somebody is complaining about harassment or, you know, that sort of thing, it's what it's for. Or if, um, there's something wrong with a textbook or something like that. But often the questions and comments that parents have are really not quite, um, don't need to go to that level before we would rather address them before they get to that level. So in working with some of the staff on site, um, there were suggestions of things that we might put in the parent handbook. And again, this goes back to conversations I've had with parents that really didn't know how to address this. And, and, um, so we're bringing things directly to the board without understanding that there are some steps in between that might not only make it easier, but faster for them to, to solve. So, um, that's what this says. And, and these are general rules that have been, we've always, um, talked about that with this, these kind of rules within staff. But realizing as we were looking at it, we really haven't published that anywhere. So that, that should be something that's in the parent handbook. So, um, bringing questions and concerns usually to your classroom teacher first and discuss it with them. And then if that's not settled, or if it's, doesn't seem to be something in a classroom level, then bring it to admin um, and have a meeting with them. And then if you still need more to reach out to the board chair or a board member, um, and then, um, explain to them and then they can decide, uh, the board member usually will committed, communicate that with the administrator or with the board chair, see if it needs to be brought up as an action item. And then you bring it to the board in open session if the other things have not come forward and you still feel like it needs to be addressed. And, and then go to the, um, uniform complaint. So, and these are really suggestions that help, um, rather than requirements, um, but suggestions that help us bring together understanding and resolution earlier in the process.
I think it's a, a good idea. And thank you for that.
Yeah.
People need to know sometimes when they bring a, uh, concern forward, that, that, you know, we tend, we tend to have that expectation that something will be done or it'll be fixed or it'll go our way. And I, I think it needs to be clear that sometimes that's not the case. What you'll get is heard in a respectful manner, but it may not change anything.
My question is, do, um, does the staff feel? Does the staff feel comfortable with having, uh, someone complain to them? Is there, do they have the support and such?
As far as that first step of go to your classroom teacher first, it's been pretty well established as long as I've been here, that that's where you start is talking with the teacher, um, you know, and, and if it's not something that classroom teacher will, um, can solve, they, or even want to solve. Sometimes they could tell them what the right answer is, but they'd really prefer me tell them what the right answer is. So they, um, they will send them to admin and they'll usually also let me know that that's coming. So, um, I haven't, this is actually coming from staff members. That's, you know, like I said, this was the way things were set up before I got here and people seem to be fine with that piece. So, um, that, yeah.
I think it makes sense to have that as the process, especially if, you know, if the complaint is about the classroom or something, the way something is being done or handled in the classroom. I think the teacher would be the best person to explain why or to help navigate that. Um, and then, but with that ability also, if the teacher, if it's not one, not in their wheelhouse or not, you know, if, if the complaint is a facility thing and not a classroom thing, you know, the ability of the teacher to be able to then kick that to the next level, if that's appropriate.
It's good to have the whole thing clarified. Definitely.
Yeah.
Rihanna Lee has her hand up.
Rihanna? Sorry, I had to find that button. Um, I was actually in on the writing of this and realized there's one thing I would like to request to be included is that, um, either it's like maybe a subheading under number one, or maybe a number two before number two is to specialty teachers directly. A lot of times, kind of to Vicky's comment, a lot of times the parent will come to the classroom teacher about the concerns with the specialty teacher. And I know like the main thing I tell the parent or the student, it's same thing with the students is you need to discuss with that teacher directly. I mean, you know, if it's something where it's like more a general concern they want me to hear, then I usually say, oh, that's probably something to take to admin at that level. But I think also including here, it's not just coming only directly to the classroom teacher. If your concern is to the specialty teacher, going to them directly. So maybe some language around that. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just hadn't thought of that when we were looking at this earlier.
It's a good edit. Thank you.
So Rihanna, are you going to redo it or, um, with that in mind?
Are we, Susan? I'm thinking of this, this is just kind of our first go-through of it, right?
Right. Yeah. Um, because you're making me think of some other changes to that, that first line. Because sometimes the complaint comes to the front desk. That's also fine, depending on what it is. So we might want to rephrase that a little bit rather than always, because it's kind of like always go to the classroom teacher and we don't necessarily want that. So I think we have to have some more discussion on that.
Or even like I, this even got me thinking about like auxiliary staff. And like, I don't think it's inappropriate for that to be funneled necessarily through the classroom teacher. That's kind of a given where the main relationship contact.
Right. There's information that you need. It might be information that you really need.
It might be information that we really need. So it's like, I don't want to necessarily discourage families from that. But also that understanding is of that, like, we have a whole staff at the school. And like, if your issue is concerns about excessive Spanish assignments or an interaction your child had with the yard duty. And you're really just wanting to talk to the person directly involved, some procedure around that.
I'm going to do point of order and just say, it looks like we still have a little work to do on that first line. And, um, we will bring it back to you again next month.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving right along to four point 10, marketing messaging.
Oh, this is fun. Okay. Um, Alex has a presentation for us. Not this one, that, that one. Yes. Thank you. All right. So we've started our work on the marketing. We met with, um, the, oh my, now I can't, okay. We met with MC2, the marketing firm that you approved the contract with, and we've met with him twice. Alex, Maggie, Monica, Riley, and I, um, met as a small team. They didn't, that was a bigger team than they actually wanted. But I said I needed at least those people there. So they took it. And so we met with them. We answered some questions and went through their process, which is called story branding. And, um, then we had a second meeting, um, on February 11th, and they brought forward some suggestions. So I wanted to share some of the things with you. Um, these were two points that I really liked as far as establishing messaging. In a storyboard, you are the guide, not the hero. So we often think of ourselves as we're selling something, we have to tell everybody how wonderful we are. But what we really are is the organization that is helping the hero or the main character get what they need and be successful. So to change your thought, our thought process a little bit, I liked that. And then whatever you're communicating, if it isn't directly related to helping the parents survive and thrive, they are not going to pay attention. So, and this is kind of a message that I, we felt like Blue Oak needed in that it's not about telling them how wonderful Waldorf is. It's about giving them a presentation that says, this is what, how we're going to help you. Next slide. So our customers are parents who want their child to have a well-rounded education. Parents of children ages three to 14 that are looking for a different type of education than a, than traditional schools offer. Or more simply put, they are parents who care about their child's wellbeing. Those are our customers. So what do Blue Oak parents want? They're looking for, and this is the language from the team. They're looking for a well-rounded education, real rounded, educated and intuitive child. They want the best education for their children. They want their children to be seen and heard. They want us to know them. Um, they want more than just academic learning. They want to create a lifelong love of learning in their child and have a place where their children have a sense of community. So then you, then you start talking about, um, how you move the parent forward so they might attend at Blue Oak. Um, they, so you try to move them from being unsure if their children's needs are being met or will be met by the traditional school system and want to move them to a parent who can take comfort in knowing their child is getting an exceptional education tailored to them. So this is the messaging that they came up with. At Blue Oak Charter School, we understand parents want the best education for their child. An education that meets the an education that meets the individual needs of the student while inspiring a lifelong love of learning. To find this, you need a school that encourages creativity, develops emotional intelligence and fosters a sense of community. The problem is most traditional schools aren't focused on the unique learning needs of the child, taking a one-size-fits-all approach to curriculum. They simply cannot accommodate the personalized student instruction your child deserves. This leaves you feeling like a number, frustrated with a sense that your school doesn't care about you or your child. At Blue Oak, your child will experience a well-rounded approach to education through the successful implementation of proven Waldorf methodology. Notice the focus is on the student and not on the Waldorf methodology. Next, next. So here's how to make it happen. Schedule a tour. So this is what we're encouraging parents to do. Schedule a tour, learn all the proven benefits of a Waldorf curriculum. Enroll your child on a better educational path. Your child isn't average. Their school shouldn't be either. It's time to rethink your student's education. Schedule a tour today. Good. And in the meantime, here are 10 questions every parent should ask on a school tour. That's available through great schools. Your child's happiness, learning and future matter to you, and they matter to us too. With Blue Oak, you can find the education you've hoped for and the unique construction your child deserves. Next slide. So then we talk about the one liner and elevator pitch. This is something that we've talked about here for, well, at least for four years and really haven't been able to bring together in a good way. So this was just such a sense of, of relief for me and awe, like, okay, we can do this. So most traditional schools, Pritin Marketing versions, most traditional schools offer a one-size-fits-all approach to the curriculum, lacking consideration from the, for the child's individual learning needs. At Blue Oak, we offer a personalized and well-rounded educational option through creative instruction using Waldorf methodology and that conversational version. We're a public charter school that puts students first using personalized and creative instruction through the Waldorf method of teaching. So that's the pitch. And then this is where we are. The create a homepage, wire frame and messaging, which we received this afternoon. And the final deliverables have been received this afternoon as well. And then we need to look at identifying Andy. Next to marketing, identifying the next marketing needs. I don't know how Andy got in there. So that's the presentation. So just to give you an impression of the work that's been done so far and the kind of things we're doing.
I think they did a really good job trying to sum it all up for us.
I'm really impressed. Really impressed. It's very concise and positive.
I would, I would recommend just knowing how people interact with text. That very first slide, not thinking here of properly constructed paragraphs, but I would add some spacing in there. Do you know what I'm talking about, Susan?
Yeah.
They also switch voices from parent to you, which is generally in writing, not great form. So I, I would suggest a little bit of reworking of that first paragraph to make some things pop in it more.
Okay.
Really good. Do we need to move on this?
No, this is just a report out to let you know that it's moving forward and where we are. And give you the sense, if you all said, oh my gosh, that's awful, then I would definitely have some different work to do. But since you seem to think it, it sounds good, we can continue to move forward with the adjustments to the webpage and other work. So.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
I would just like to bring up a point of order and make sure that we open this to our audience if anybody wanted to speak on this topic.
Well, my comment again, I think that first slide could be worked, reworked a little bit. And I still think that within the teachers and the staff, there should be maybe some effort on, on the part of, of your part, Susan, or the staff to come up with in two sentences or less, what Waldorf means to them.
No. Sorry, guys.
Thank you for the suggestions.
Alrighty. Moving on. 4.11, we've got the SOPA Local Plan B and Participation Agreement.
Rachel, do you want to address that?
It was just stating that we were going to continue to work with El Dorado Selpa.
So we're asking for a motion and approval to continue to work with, to approve this plan to continue to work with the El Dorado Sopa. And we are happy with their work. They, they do a good job in supporting us and answering our questions and keeping us in the line, in between the lines we need to stay within. So.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Well, I was going to say, before we make a motion, I was curious if any of the community members had anything to say? Or questions on this item?
Thanks. All right. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to continue to work with El Dorado Charter. It just went away, so I don't know exactly what it said.
Second.
Okay. All right. Ready for a vote? No more comments or questions? All right, Tricia?
Hi.
Laurel?
Bye.
Chelsea?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
And Vicky Wanacott, aye. Hey.
Was that Laurel who seconded that motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And at last, our favorite part, the grade level report.
Vicky, I think we had 4.1 point, or 4.12 first.
Oh dang. All right. Thank you. 4.11. Nope, we did that. Intrim Charter Council Member Election. Elections, all right.
So as you recall, we had Heather Bonilla resign from the board last month. And so we put out, as is required in our process, we put out for a new applicant. In this case, the board votes on the membership. And the person, whether or not they want to accept them, we have had one person apply, and that's Amber Brown. And Amber, I believe is here tonight. She's been attending meetings pretty regularly as well. So I don't know how you want to, to take a look at, ask her any questions or vote for her to be on the committee or on the board.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, so I know that we had some people that, because we had votes last time around. So did we reach out to all those people? And then Amber responded and is that kind of where we're at?
Yes, we had two others who ran for office last time and were spoken to, but we're not interested in applying again. So Amber did apply.
Good.
Great. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you for wanting to be part of the board.
Well, thank you for allowing me to apply.
Yeah. Good.
I, I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions for us, Amber?
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't at this time. I, I have asked some questions. I've talked to Chelsea a little bit and Susan a little bit. So I think at this point I'm good, but yeah, I'm open if you guys have any questions for me.
So the only thing, you're on parent council, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So with that, she can't represent her class as well as be on charter, right? Susan, from what I recall?
That's my understanding, yes, my memory. So.
And so that would be the only thing that I ran into. So just so you know. Okay, yeah, I can talk to Ally about that. I had a, somebody that was doing it with me too, so maybe they. I don't, I don't have any questions.
Do we need a motion and a vote to make it official?
You need a motion and a vote to appoint her to the board.
Great. Then I, Chelsea, would like to motion that we appoint Amber Brown to the Blue Oak Charter Council.
This is Laura. I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. And any further discussion, questions? We'll proceed with the vote. Tricia?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
And Laurel?
Aye.
And Vicky Wanacott, aye.
Yay.
All right, welcome, Amber.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, now we can do the grade level part. And she's gone.
No, I'm, Riley is gone. She took a personal, or she was gone today. So she was not able to attend the meeting. So I will do my best in her stead. We do know she gives a lovely faculty report. So just, Susan will probably talk some about this on, in her executive director's report, but we are in the midst right now of doing our iReady testing, which is our beginning of year and mid-year standardized assessment. Just see how the kids are doing and it's a whole interesting new one to do in this new and different time, but it's given, going to give us a lot of valuable data about where the kids are at and, you know, what we want to do moving forward into the rest of the year. So if you were, Tricia, my apologies, and Amber, my apologies, you will have seen this a second time, but Mr. Meyer put together a really nice presentation for the parent council this most recent meeting. And I just felt like I wanted to borrow it rather than reinvent the wheel. It was a really nice one with lots of cool things. And I also heard, and Susan can verify this, that this may actually be shown at the Chico Unified Meeting, or was shown at the Chico Unified Meeting. So.
I'm not going to be able to do that. It's that, that's not what they do, but thank you anyway.
So yeah, we have, and I'll make sure this gets sent to all of you so you can see it. But our, both of our handwork teachers always give beautifully detailed updates of what they are doing with their class. So second, for second and third grader, learning about the water cycle, hearing different stories about it and doing different sewing projects related to that. And this particular one was made by a second grader named Charlize. I also, the fourth graders are cross stitching, which is a standard handwork for fourth grade. And it's really fun because they make their own designs in fourth grade on graph paper and then they have to cross stitch it. And I love Claire's input here that students are encouraged to do activities that are grounding and root them in their physical space in fourth grade. And so their X stitches help them with that feeling of, I am here. And this cross stitch project here belongs to one culture Maycheck. And then our fifth graders are needle felting, which is always exciting when students get to do that for the very first time. And Dayton Ernest is pictured here showing off his rainbow needle felting project. And then our, both of our handwork teachers have been doing an amazing job working on figuring out how to do a very not Zoom friendly teaching in a Zoom friendly way. And if you ever are around for packet pickup, thank your handwork teacher because they typically put together about a thousand different little packages of whatever is going home. But I, maybe because I'm a middle school teacher, I want to particularly shout out Ms. Sarah, our middle school teacher, in really trying to figure out, typically the middle schoolers do like hand, pretty advanced hand sewing projects, like making clothing and things like that and, and machine sewing projects. It would be really hard to do remotely. And so Sarah has been getting really creative, not only with things that they can do at home, but also things that are engaging. Because secret, the middle schoolers are not always the easiest to engage, even in the best of times. So she's been doing all kinds of fun stuff with them. They just recently finished the bean bags and she challenged them to learn how to juggle. And then currently I believe they have soap at home right now and they're learning how to carve, starting with soap. But they've been doing lots of different things. I know my class speaks very highly of it. I also know Claire didn't put any slides about it on here, but I also know that Claire has been using her handwork time with the students to bring different stories for Black History Month and stories of different like designers and artists and textile artists and things like that. Kind of bringing in different, different ones to share with her students. I'm kind of highlighting that during this month. So six is a review from Sarah. Sixth graders are working in ceramics and learning kind of tying it in ancient Roman techniques and comparing and contrasting that to modern day practices. And now they're in a big embroidery unit. She speaks highly of them figuring that out over Zoom. Seventh graders have been planning stuff. They're also doing soap carving, working on advanced needle felting. Learning how to kind of needle felt all the layers of animal being that they're creating. The eighth graders asked her, this is so eighth grade. When will I ever need to ask to know this, they ask, and now they have their answer. They needed math formulas, critical thinking skills and basic knowledge of hand sewing while learning to create patterns from start to finish. So far they've created tomato pincushions to sew their pins and some other things that are blocked by my slideshow. All right, so our lovely kindergarten where all the most beautiful magical things happen. So these are all of our distance students have been making all sorts of lovely Valentine things. And teacher Susan has done an amazing job engaging the distance learning kindergarteners. I know a friend of mine was sharing her child's little hand art that they had just finished making. And then our onsite kindergartners who are discovering, or who are learning all sorts of amazing ways to do things outside under the wonderful holding of teacher Cheryl. She now has all of the onsite students who she is teaching in split cohorts. So they are painting, drawing and stitching at school and taking little journeys in the garden, which kindergarten always thinks is magical. And they've started the story of the three oranges. And we've got a young little student here starting their stitching on their heart.
Brianna, you said split cohorts. What does that mean?
So they have, they have, she's got their all onsite, but she's seeing like one group at a time. And then the other group has like structured free play and things like that, as best I understand it.
Oh, like with, with one of the kindergarten aides?
Yes.
Oh neat.
Yeah, and Cheryl, I believe, is going back and forth between the rooms. And that's kind of how we're managing, how they're managing the sanitizing and stuff. So she sees like the Maple Rose kindergartners in the Maple Rose room and the Lily kindergartners in the Lily room.
Hey, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. And, and, and watching both her and Susan really plan, but especially Cheryl plan and how to make a kindergarten that looks very, very different, still be as magical as it can be, is pretty amazing to behold. So our first grade just finished up their second math block. They learned about adding, subtracting, multiplying and dividing with the help of Addy Add, Mindy Multiply, Simon Subtract. Mindy multiplies, Simon subtract, and Desmond divide. So it's a classic one in first grade to have a story around where each of these characters who have had different names over the years, depending on the teacher, but they all have a personality that goes with the math action that they are doing. So Addy Add may want to, I don't know, be always gathering lots of things to have around here. Second grade with Ms. Maycheck, they are learning cursive. And how to make form their cursive letters, which is always a very exciting thing when first they learn it. And they're using inspiration from King of the, the King of Ireland's son, which is also often a very favorite story in second grade. I know my own now 15 year old, when he was a second grader, could not stop talking about this story. Teacher Sheila is sharing her morning math and cursive practice, working with multiplying and dividing rectangular arrays, which is a form of structuring numbers for those telling times and fine tuning or penmanship while working on poetry. Not me, this is the other Miss Lee, by the way, our wonderful Ms. Sarah Lee in third grade. They did some wonderful math outside. You see a beautiful example of some rectangular arrays right here. So it looks like three times six in pink flowers there. When they were done completing their page in the book, they were allowed to have some free play and she's showing that the student here made multiplication arrays with flowers and pokeballs. Which have a technical name, but that's all that the students ever call them. So here is fourth grade with Ms. Murray. Mrs. Murray, they're finishing up their Mayan mythology block and they're now in their Norse mythology block, which is always a huge favorite in fourth grade. Working and improving their writing every day. And you are seeing four students here show off their sparkle and shine that they have for our spirit day. For that, the last time we had a spirit day, it was week before last. Then we have Ms. Hunter, who is just finished up her Mezzo American Studies block. They made Mayan masks. They're working on testing for iReady. And they're also about to begin their last North mythology block. Then we have fifth grade here. Ms. Jennifer has been in a big unit with the first through fourth books in the Harry Potter series. And as to be expected, the children are enjoying it immensely. They're learning how to cite evidence from the text in their writing. They're creating capstone essays. They're analyzing a Kipling poem. Analyzing some features of Harry Potter, Harry himself. And yeah, lots of good imaginative play coming out of that. As the two students are just enjoying themselves and comparing themselves and they're coming of age to Harry as they read about him. And some incredible art, including Jennifer's just absolutely spectacular chalkboard drawing. Once again, over here on the left with Harry there in front of the Quidditch circles, Quidditch goals. And Ms. Welch has just finished recently an acoustics block. Where there's physics block where they're studying acoustics, heat and light. These are really, the sixth grade in Waldorf is the first time we like I would say move into like a really scientific study of some of these concepts. We've been visiting them in a lot of different ways in earlier grades and doing a lot of scientific study in other ways, but it becomes a lot more formalized in sixth grade. And it's fun to kind of show them the sort of basic phenomenas, like the experiences of sound. But then start to think about them really scientifically. One of the first ones we do, which is always a huge hit, is a mystery sound experiment where we have like 10 or 11 things behind a screen. And they have to guess what we're trying to make a sound with. And it often baffles them to no end, which is so fun. Mrs. Madera is also in, also in physics. Lots of exciting discussions about what they noticed and what they wondered, tied their experiences to their feeling. They've studied different sources of sound, pitch, volume, the propagation of sound and the power of sound. They studied the propagation of light, properties of light, and they also began their study of color, all of which will be continued in more depth next year in seventh grade. And lots of fun excitement, fun experience in this block. And this was a fun little one I did with my students and trying to find ways to do arts more creatively and ways to do art that better loops in my distant students. I found a really fun activity online using Google Slides and studying Piet Mondrian. Which you've, if you don't realize it, I'm sure you've seen some of his kind of red, black, yellow, white kind of architecture-ish looking paintings. So we, we studied several of his paintings and then the students used Google Slides to create their own kind of version inspired by Mondrian's work. So this was a recent art activity that we did. And then Mr. Meyer has been studying organic chemistry for the last several weeks. So they explored fire, water, chemical reactions, elements and more. He also, he did not specifically share it here, but to cap off his study of organic chemistry, because it's the study of how our body processes food, he and his class made pancakes over Zoom, which was a big hit. He feels like science always brings out a side of his students that is not seen elsewhere and they love observing and striving to understand their world. And that is our faculty report. So I will make sure Alex sends that out to you so you can read and look at it in more depth.
Thank you. It was just as good the second time.
Thank you.
I've also been posting the faculty slides on our website on the parent resources page. If anyone is curious to see the past ones.
Thank you, Alex.
That's great, Alex. Riley will love hearing that.
Yeah. All right, executive director's report.
So lots, lots going on, long report, don't plan to read it all. Just a few of the favorite moments from the month covering Susan Littlesey's reading to kindergarteners. Kindergarteners are especially fun to read to. And then just students being so grateful for the work. We are really noticing that kids really appreciate, that are back on campus, really appreciate being here with their friends. And so they are, they are happy to be here and we're just so happy to have them here. And just things like finish speaking to a student who was writing an email to Susan. That's me asking to be class president. And they just have funny things to say, your job is not to worry, your job is to be happy. So they just make us I'm happy all the time. Other than that, I'm not going to read the report. It is available to you and available online. A lot of good work is being done and I will talk about iReady next month. So unless you have any questions, that's my report at eight oh five.
At eight oh five?
Yeah.
Nicely done. All right.
Um, I just have one question, just I should have brought up in parent council reports. One thing is ongoing question is class sizes and waiting lists and all of that, so.
So we're still, you know, we are limited to the space in a classroom. We attempted this last month to try putting a class in two separate classrooms with aid support. And after a week, both the teachers were like, you know, this, they just are losing connection with the students. And that's such a critical part of our instructional process. So we have been able to bring those classes all into one class because of the four foot distancing. But it really limits us to about 20 kids in a class per teacher onsite. So I'm starting to address that and looking at how to move forward and a lot of questions about next year at this point as well. The state superintendent is hopeful that we'll have this all under control in three months. But he is not, I think, in the majority of, as one of the majority of educators thinking that that's going to be done because we're really still concerned about the variance and so forth. So just moving forward to the best we can and serving the families that we can. But we will get to a point where we're, we have a limitation on the number of students that we can have on campus, which will be less than our full number unless the, unless that expectation of social distancing between students goes down again. And it could, the actual recommendation from CDC and from the pediatricians organization is three foot, but the state is currently holding it four, so it could go down again. We don't know.
Do you have an idea of like how many classes are kind of capped out and have waiting lists that as of right now, we're not gonna accommodate? Is it just a few or?
We did, we have two classes. Right now. And then we have two, two that we're working on bringing a couple of students on a waiting list for those other two classes.
Okay, so you, two, not just two that are full, but those two full classes each have students on the waiting list, you said?
No, there's two other classes that have waiting lists that we're working on redesigning the, the space so that we can bring more students on.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Not prob.
All right. Good to see you all. Next meeting is Tuesday, March 16th at 6:00 PM. March already, holy cow. I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I.